Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lakeport City Council Candidates Forum. I'm Elizabeth Larson, editor and publisher of Lake County News and All Pito Nights moderator, and we're glad to host the candidates for this fall's race for Lakeport City Council. And we have them seated in alphabetical order. So, starting at the left of the room is Kim Costa, Brandon Disney, Michael Froyo, Kenny Parlette, Carl Porter, and Christina Price. So, thank you all for being here tonight. The main goal of tonight's forum is to give the community an opportunity to know each of these candidates better. So, we'll start with one-minute opening statements from each one, in which they can introduce themselves, share about their background and interests, and then we'll move through a series of questions covering a wide range of topics submitted by community members. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to answer those questions. The question and answer period will be followed by time for closing statements, when each candidate will again have two minutes to wrap up. By candidates, you'll see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left in your allotted time. A red card will be raised when your time is up. At that point, you can finish your thought, but please bring your answer to a close. So, let's get started. We have a lot of ground to cover tonight. So, we'll begin with those opening statements, and we will go in alphabetical order for the opening statements. And again, each one of you will have one minute to introduce yourselves. So, we will start with Kim Costa.
Thank you. So, I am Kim Costa. I have been serving on the city council for two years. My background, I have a master's degree in social work, which includes a component of public administration. I have over 30 years in public service, working primarily in government positions with the most vulnerable children and families in our communities. And that has been mostly through protective services programs. In that role, I have collaborated with law enforcement, with courts, with community partners. I have evaluated, assessed needs in our community, and I have established services to meet those needs. I am very interested in promoting robust community involvement and a responsive city government.
Thank you. Hold on just a second. I'm having an issue with my timer here. Okay. Brandon?
Hi, everyone. My name is Brandon Disney. It has been my pleasure to serve on the Lakeport City Council for the last two years. I was appointed to the position with a vacancy, and I'm asking for everyone's vote so I can continue the work that I've started. Since being appointed, we saw the completion of Hobart Community Park, paving of several local roads, including sidewalks, and pedestrian improvements along South Main Street, and many more. I'm also the vice-chair of the Lake County Recreation Agency, a newer formation, a group with the county, the city of Lakeport and the city of Clear Lake, and their main focus is on recreation for our residents, which ties into my background. I grew up here in Lakeport, left for a short time, and went to California State University Sacramento, where I got my bachelor's degree in recreation, parks, and tourism administration. So, recreation is very near and dear to my heart. I've run Disney's boat rentals with my family for the last 40 years, and look forward to continuing that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Froyo, for those of you that might not know me. I've been on the city council for the last three and a half years. Currently, I'm the mayor. I feel very fortunate to have been chosen amongst my peers. I'm a licensed general contractor. I work for myself. I specialize in repairs. I stay busy. I like keeping a small group. I've been told to move along here. Let's see. I serve on the ABA, abandoned vehicle abatement, the Lake County Solid Waste Task Force. I've served on the LMSA, Cal Cities Redwood Empire, and the Lake County Rec Authority, and the Ad hoc Committee for Sidewalks, which we call Right Away. My passion is a clean Lakeport, and that's economically successful.
Thank you. Kenny?
I'm Kenny Parlette. I've been here since 1970. I graduated here from Clear Lake High School. I've been in business for, I'm in my 55th year with Lakeview Market and Lakeview's Quality Catering. I've had vast leadership experience with a dozen years on the Chamber of Commerce, two times the president. I was three times the president of North Shore Business Association. I was the president of the local Rotary Club back when it had nearly 100 members, and I've been there for 45 years. I helped found Mount Canotta facilitation, which was a local economic development thing that didn't go too well. I have had, I've been head of the CMOA for 35 years, 32 years. I was served on the hospital board. My leadership in politics, I've been on the APC, the LTA, LAPCO, Solid Waste, ABA, and I'm in my 12th year. And with 10 to 12 trips to California League of Cities for training, I have been educated in matters regarding our county and our city.
Thank you. Carl?
I moved to Lakeport in 1972, three years old. Graduated Clear Lake High School in 1986 as a valedictorian. Went to New York CW Post, LIU, for a year, and then I went to Korea for eight years. Got my bachelor's and master's at Seoul National University. So, I've got a little global knowledge from that. That's what I was interested in, learning about the world. Came back, taught for three years here in the county. One year studying, one year at Mount Vista Middle School, half-time contract in math, geography, and PE. Next year, adult school, also in Pulseville, teaching immigrants English. And then off to China for eight years, taught at four different colleges, universities there. Back to Lake County for a year, go to Japan. Served on a murder trial jury for six weeks, I mean, for two months. That was quite something, just when I got back. And then Japan for three years, teaching at a middle school. I was an employee of the city of Iowa, 74,000 people. And back here after that.
Thank you. Christina?
Good evening. My name is Christina Price. I am currently serving as District Board Planning Commissioner. I've been on for five years, currently serving as chair. I am also a solo real estate broker for the past 10 years. My goals for, if I have to be elected on city council, my goals are connectivity and walkability, focusing on the local economy, which also focuses on the stores that are struggling to make it, and then also recruiting new businesses to the area, as well as more community engagement, whether that is volunteering or creating more nonprofit organizations, and basically taking all of our tools that I've accumulated and putting it to work for the future of Lakeport.
Thank you. Okay. Just a second. Having some issues with my timer here. Okay, now, we're going to move into the questions, and based on a number draw, we're going to rotate based on that order established by the draw. Michael Froyo drew the closest number, so he will go first. And again, each of you will have two minutes to answer the question. So, the first question. Please share the reason why you're running either for election or reelection this year, and what is your top priority if elected in November?
Thank you. My top reason for being here is to make the community a better place. I've enjoyed being on the council for, like I said, three and a half years. There's still work that I'd like to see happen, and I feel like I've got ideas that can turn our city around. I'm excited and looking forward to what it would take to economically change Lakeport in a profound manner by proposing a color designer to decorate and pick colors for the downtown so that we can have a cohesive, beautiful-looking downtown. We have beautiful buildings. I'd like to see our motels function more highly. I'd like to see small businesses that cater to people coming to visit here. I think that Lakeport has everything that it needs, it just needs to be polished. I'd like to see the entrances to our city be more attractive. The city council has worked hard to pave and to infill sidewalks. We continue to do that work. And when you think about going to another city, do you ever go there and think, "Well, you know, would I live here?" I tend to do that a lot, only I tend to think, "What do they have that we can bring back here? How can we be more prosperous?" And I think that we have everything in place. We have a beautiful lake. We have a beautiful city. The mountains, we have such a unique place. What I'd like to see happen is the businesses work together to make this a more prosperous city, and I think that this is very possible, that we can become a very serious destination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenny?
So, the reason I'm running is having said on financial benefits and the packages and the wage and salaries things, I am keenly aware of the fact that the city municipalities all over the state of California are in very, very deep trouble, and this is a potential economic disaster for the entire state, not just the city of Lakeport. And this is no time to have people that are trying to test the learning curve and test the waters, when they don't know what UAL is, they don't know the difference between annexations, sphere of influence, they don't know what the payment management index is and how it works. This is a time where we have to make tough decisions. You have to have the experience, and I can't even imagine someone coming in here and trying to learn the ropes and find out what AD 109 is, or Prop 47, and Prop 57, and what a Prop 218 is. We will need warriors to fight this battle, not new recruits. This is going to be one of the most difficult battles we're going to fight. I don't think most people are aware of the financial conditions that we're in. We just handed out raises to the LEA. We're already prognosticated to be underwater in two years. We're already looking at layoffs. This is no time for people to come in and play city council. No, I mean, I'm not trying to defame anybody, but this is time for real, strong leadership, tough decisions that need to be made, when they need to be made, that are fair and abide by the civil rights and the Constitution of the United States in every way, shape, and form.
Yes. Thank you. Carl?
I've been watching TED Talk presentations for quite a while. I got involved with one urban city planner named Jeff Speck. He wrote a book called Walkable City: How Downtown Can Save America One Step at a Time. Yeah, I've watched his videos for about 10 years, and then suddenly I'm reading his book, and I realized that our downtown has some very fixable problems with the way the cities are laid, the streets are laid out. And I've just started talking with city officials, a few of them are here tonight, and working with Main Street Association as a volunteer, trying to understand why the city is the way it is. And I definitely will continue with this concept. I have a few things that I still need to do. It's very complex, but it's very doable, and it's also something that I want to do for the city because I'm very grateful to the people of Lakeport, all they've done for me, so, okay.
Thank you. Christina?
Just to refresh everyone, the question is, "Why are you running for city council 2024?" The reason why I'm running for city council 2024, the past five years on the planning commission, I've gained a lot of knowledge and experience with zoning and land use, acquisition, general plans, things like that, things that I feel I could use as part of my toolkit and bring them to the city council to make, as a whole, we could all benefit. Another reason why I decided to run for city council is because I'm a leader. I feel that there's lots of changes to be made, and somebody has to lead, somebody who is new and somebody who hasn't been in the same position for a long time, looking for the same different changes, or the same changes that obviously haven't happened. If those changes were to happen, I feel like they've had time to implement those changes, and it's time for something new. It's time to give something else a try that also has experience, but that would also be an asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
So, over my 30-year-plus career in managing social programs, I have learned the complexities of addressing a program, a problem, finding a solution, and implementing that. And over the past two years, since I've sat on the council, I really have come to appreciate the complexities of city governance, even a small, sweet city like we have. And there are multiple goals that are necessary and worth pursuing, is strengthen our law enforcement, our safety, keep our area safe from disasters, also bring in economic growth. And as others have pointed out, these are difficult times. Revenues for the city and other cities in California are declining and becoming stagnant, and so it takes a real creative thinking approach, and this is something that I gravitate toward and love to do, looking at a problem, figuring out what is the creative solution. Sometimes, we also, we need good plans, we need good solid long-term plans. We also need to figure out how to intervene in the seemingly small things we can do that will move the needle, that'll make something better. One of the things, so, addressing all of that in a holistic way and working collaboratively to do that, this is something I'm interested in. I think it's very much needed, that collaborative effort with, amongst ourselves, with the community, and with our other local jurisdiction partners. I have a very large desire to help bring in more community involvement. I take very seriously that it's the citizens of Lakeport that, whose voices we need to listen to, and I'd like to do things like conversations with a council member, have regular meetings in comfortable settings so that we can all have conversations, so your information about what's important to you will always be alive with the council when decisions are being made. Thank you.
Brandon?
So, I would say that my top reason for running is actually my kids. I've got a four-year-old and an almost-two-year-old, and growing up here, you know, you don't see a lot of changes over the years, which is a good thing. A lot of people love our little city, and I sure do, too. But I think that for Lakeport to be on the map, you know, we're so close to the Bay Area. We see at our boat rental shop, a lot of visitors come up from the Bay Area because they want a break from the big city life. They like the small-town feel that we can offer to our residents. But we need to focus on our businesses, our downtown. Attracting a new hotel to the Dutch Harbor property right by the new park is a top priority of mine, and also to help our residents and focus on my expertise, which is recreation. I ran camps for kids in Sacramento right after getting my bachelor's degree, and that was at a park with a community center, just like what we have. So, my big goal is to help the businesses thrive while also creating more opportunities, especially for the youth in our city.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Kenny. And we're going to move on to the topic of public safety. What expectations do you have for the Lakeport Police Department in terms of community engagement and crime prevention? And how do you envision supporting the department in achieving these goals?
Well, the good news is, we have been working to try and get locals to get on board. It's been a very, very effective program. We've gone through the ranks, and we've figured out ways to keep people with certain steps in their progress so they can get better wages, because before, it's always been that someone would get trained, and then they would go off to frame on or go somewhere else and get a $20,000 raise. What the police force has done under the leadership of Chief Rasmussen, and what they're doing, what we're doing now, is to get local people in there, and we realize that public safety is of the utmost importance, and we have put the highest priority of that in the council, and we understand that even though, you know, roads and everything else is important, safety is above and beyond everything, and keeping our police force, which now is at full force for the first time in a very, very long time, and the protocols that we put in, the systems that we put in, and the steps that we put in to encourage them to stick around, has been very, very effective. And just the other day, we've talked about other things, about possible SWAT and different things, to even encourage more engagement, more learning, and even a better police force in the future. But we have already attacked that and already gone through that, and we are well on our way to having the best police force we've had under the new leadership of Dale Stobbe, but it couldn't get much better than Chief Rasmussen.
Thank you. Carl? Would you like me to read, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, no. No, thank you. I, I've been, well, thank you for getting me to laugh. I feel a little better now, yeah. Okay, take a breath. Well, I've been engaging with community members at a few events, and I've heard a few of them talk about policing in a frustrated manner. And it really made me think that if I'm elected, I would like to give a briefing on what the police are capable, I mean, allowed to do, because some of their, and also, yeah, what they're allowed to do, and how I should engage the community talking about policing. And I do want to be a kind of liaison, because I know the police are very busy, and often they're so busy, they make people frustrated trying to deal with them. But I think I have the patience to deal with public people. I was a teacher, as you just heard, adults and children of all ages, and teaching all subjects. So, yes, very important that the community trusts the police and have a way of getting in touch with them, not just the 911, which has been frustrating for many people. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. And if at any time anybody wants me to repeat a question, please let me know. I wasn't pointing that, Carl.
Carl, if you didn't ask, I was going to ask anyway.
Christina?
If you would, please, repeat the question.
What expectations do you have for the Lakeport Police Department in terms of community engagement and crime prevention? And how do you envision supporting the department in achieving these goals?
Okay, we'll first touch on crime prevention. I am aware that the police department does have a full staff and a designated downtown officer who is boots-on-the-ground, if you will. I believe that opening that door, conversation with local businesses and people that are in the area, just offers a sense of safety in general. Having someone that you know you can pick up the phone and call someone that actually will pick up the phone, whether she's available or will send a text, it's just nice having that communication. I feel like that goes a long way. Also, collaborating with the other law enforcement agencies in the area is going to be beneficial and probably has been, especially being with the city of Lakeport, right next to the county, and also code enforcement. I would think, I would like to see more collaboration with local code enforcement as well. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
I'm going to go ahead and let you say it one more time.
Okay.
It was complex. I think I got it all, but I don't want to miss any of it.
You're welcome to ask anytime. What expectations do you have for the Lakeport Police Department in terms of community engagement and crime prevention? And how do you envision supporting the department in achieving these goals?
Okay. First, I guess I want to say that I can appreciate that this is challenging. As has already been stated, safety is a paramount value and concern, already identified by the city council. So, that is a goal the council has moving forward, regardless of who's sitting in the chair. Our, I totally appreciate, respect, and value our law enforcement officers, and I need to, I want to always hear from them, what is it that you need? What are you experiencing that is making it challenging? I think we have laws that both cause for responsibility on the side of law enforcement and then tie the hands of lost law enforcement, to be able to make that happen. At the same time, some of that is very balanced. I think some of those laws are aimed at ensuring that people's constitutional rights aren't invaded and that kind of thing, so it's a necessary thing to consider. But I think always listening with law enforcement, talking with them about what they need to do an excellent job in pursuing that. What I've come to know is that we have a law enforcement team that wants to do exactly that, an excellent job, and they're going to go above and beyond to do it. So, when they make clear their needs, then we'll be in a position to respond to them. I think that part of that comes down to, yes, livable wages that will help us get folks that are interested in being here, high-level, good training, equipment that they need, and just, the community policing has been really good. We've got some great special programs with our resource officers in schools. We have our K-9 officer, and continuing to hold on to those gains, respond to get the department what else they need, and just make sure that they, they understand that they are respected, both valued in terms of how we respond to them and the tangibles that we bring to them.
Thank you. Brandon?
So, first off, the first half of that question is our expectations for the police department. I think number one, in most people's minds, is a quick response time. We do, the data's there that we do have a pretty quick response time, especially when it comes to the most important calls. But I think some of the frustrating parts from the public can be when you have an issue. It might not be the top-tier issue that you need the police to respond to, and it just takes a little while longer because it's not the top priority. So, I want to work on increasing call times across the board, even though we already have a pretty good response time for the biggest emergencies. I want to make sure that our new chief, Stobbe, focuses on picking up where Chief Rasmussen left off on community policing and building the relationships with the residents. I think the downtown police officer that the council approved that position for was a huge step in the right direction, to have them walk the downtown, to walk around the park. I'm at the park with my kids all the time, and it seems like a few years ago, there were times that you did not want to go down to Library Park, and now you can go down to Library Park throughout the day and feel a whole lot safer. And that just came from a dedicated officer to walk that area. So, I think we are doing a lot, and we do have some more expectations for the police department. Second half of that question is, how would we support our officers? One thing that the council just adopted last meeting was a wellness plan, and that wellness plan is not just for the staff that works here at City Hall, that extends to the police department. And in that wellness plan, there's, it's still kind of in its infancy, but I think that showing that care for all of your employees here at the city will go a long way. Also, just the added training and for our officers to feel like they have opportunities to grow within the department has been a big step as well.
Thank you. Michael?
Give it to me, Elizabeth.
Okay. What expectations do you have for the Lakeport Police Department in terms of community engagement and crime prevention? And how do you envision supporting the department in achieving these goals?
Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying that code enforcement and police enforcement, law enforcement are two different things. However, Christina, I support you in that.
Thank you.
I would like to just quickly plug the fact that code enforcement is going through our city and changing violations, and that's what makes that different from law enforcement. So, we are finally fully staffed. We've been talking about putting a dedicated officer for a number of years in the downtown and the parks, and it's working out terrific, tremendously. I'd like to see things that are a little bit different. I'd like to see... I'd like to see higher vis, visibility of our cars. I would like to see our officers patrolling through the city. I would like to see them go through our neighborhoods. I'd like to see them engage with the neighborhood watch groups more often. I would like them to know who the leaders are in the neighborhood watch groups because that's where they're gonna get information about what's actively happening that they can't otherwise get. Um, I'd like to see more traffic and parking enforcement. I really think that that's something that now that we're fully stepped, um, that, that we're ready to go there. Um, well, I didn't read off of this and I wound up covering everything that I have. So I'd like to say to echo what, uh, council member Disney just said, um, we've been, uh, doing a lot to retain all of our employees. Um, you know, we keep their wages competitive with the other municipalities that are around us because we're hoping that, uh, the good people that we train don't wind up leaving us. Also, the wellness program that was proposed in the, the last meeting is a, a step in the right direction to keep all of our employees happy, healthy, and, uh, hopefully lower insurance costs.
Thank you. Okay, so the next question, we'll start with Carl. So let's talk about transportation. What are your transportation priorities for Lakeport? How do you feel about the tra, transportation options currently available in the city? And can all of our residents affordably get where they need to go? And if not, what will you do to improve transportation in Lakeport?
All right, well, yes, uh, well, we're very lucky because we don't have traffic jams. And I've heard from friends that even Ukiah has traffic jams, so that's a wonderful thing. I know we do have a great, um, system of streets for the cars. And I am, yes, uh, yeah, actually, part of my plan includes making it smoother with, with many roundabouts on Forbes, three of them. Yeah, it's gonna be better. It's gonna take a while to get it going. Um, I am a person who uses our Lake Transit, which is, because I'm a walker and I'm a transit taker. And, uh, so, um, they've set up one bus route for our city. It's, uh, Route Eight. It starts at the Sutter Lakeside Hospital, goes to the casino, which is exactly where it should start and end, of course. Uh, you know, that's, that's where people go. And, oh, and it's, and I used to take it from Lower Lake when I worked at Lower Lake High School, I'd take it. And, uh, it's amazing because transit's supposed to take, uh, double the time. But you can get from Lower Lake to Lakeport in 45 minutes on that bus, which is, that's pretty amazing. You know, if you think about the standard for transit. Um, so, yeah, it's a wonderful program and I, I have other ideas too, but I, I don't, I, how much time do I have?
About 30 seconds.
Oh, right, okay. Well, I came up with a very wonderful idea where we could have like an amphibious vehicle going into the lake, taking us around downtown, connecting the main street to the park with a, with a transit. A vehicle like that costs over a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm not sure how or when that would happen and how you insure it. And, uh, but it, it would really put us on the map, you know, with that kind of availability, absolutely. Territorial destination.
So are you referring to something like the ducks that used to be in Seattle?
Yes, yes, London has them now, London, England, yeah.
And you said for follow-up, you said three roundabouts on Forbes? Is this which your plan?
Yes, yes, um, for smooth traffic. This is, to be a modern city, and that's what you need, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Christina?
Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. What are your transportation priorities? How do you feel about the transportation options currently available in the city? Can all of our residents affordably get where they need to go? And if not, what will you do to improve transportation in Lakeport?
Okay, there, there's a lot to touch on there. So, um, do I believe that, um, everyone is, let me just back that up. Priority, um, do I feel like it's, can you repeat the, I'm so sorry, I'm, I'm so blank right now. I was just gonna go with it. Cause I know that I know, I just.
So why don't, why don't you focus on what are your transportation priorities?
Okay, that's perfect. Priorities, um, I would like to increase, um, the amount of crosswalks. I would like to add a designated bike lane, which would also create a buffer with parking next to the sidewalk, which would allow more, it's, it's more comfortable to walk when there is, when you're not so close to the cars. So that would be something that I think needs to be looked at as well. Um, and our current bus stops for the, um, for the transit, some of them are up to par, where some of them are either in the direct sunlight, there's no places for people to sit, which is mandatory. Um, you'll notice some of the bus stops have benches and covers, for people who actually need to get out of the elements, it's a pretty important thing to have. Um, adding bike lanes, um, what's the second part of the question, Elizabeth?
Um, can everybody get, affordably get where they need to go? And if not, what would you do to improve it?
I think the ones that drive can get where they need to go. Uh, one thing that you will notice here in the city limits, a lot more people tend to walk. You'll see, um, all different types, um, in ages of people that are, um, walking. And I feel that if there was, excuse me, added safety, whether there are flashing beacons or some type of traffic calming strategies, slowing down the speed of Main Street being one of them, um, that it would allow people to get to where they need to be safer. That completes it.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
So, I, I think I'm gonna round back to the priority part. But what I, I, I'm a driver, I use a car. So I've listened and learned from folks that have brought forward at council meetings what the difficulties are, that highlight for people who, um, choose to use bikes and choose to walk, the challenges that we have here in Lakeport. In our small little town, it's not really the most walkable or the most, uh, bikable and it's not necessarily safe or comfortable for that. So I think that is a very viable and important thing to do. I think it's, um, just what vibrant towns have, they have that aspect. So I think that would be a priority and a good thing to explore and invest in. I think that, um, the transit, uh, I'm in contact with a number of people who do utilize the transit and while there may be routes that go from point A to point B, it's difficult to get your business done with multiple appointments and, uh, yeah, different places around the lake with that transit. So for Lakeport, I'd wanna make sure that the transit routes that are serving Lakeport are actually, um, sufficient to, um, get folks to and from the places they need to go, that there's enough, uh, routes, buses running at enough times. And I loved what Christina Price said about making sure that when people are waiting, they're waiting in a safe and comfortable environment. So I think making sure that the transit is functioning well for people who choose that route. Vehicles, gas prices, well, inflation is pretty much off the hook right now. And so, um, I don't know how much our local efforts are gonna make. I, I think we're all hoping to see a shift in that. Um, so, you know, people who choose to use vehicles still, hopefully, they can, they're doing that because they can afford to get where they're going. So I guess my priorities are safe, comfortable, transportation of all forms for all the citizens in Lakeport.
Thank you. Brandon?
So my, um, priority, I think, is specifically the walkability and bikability of Lakeport. The city limits is relatively small and that's where we, as council members, have the most influence, is on the city limits specifically. Um, little influence with, with transit and bus stops, um, but that not, not nearly as much as what is directly within the city limits. I used to ride my bike all around the lake. That was, uh, what we did for exercise, for transportation. Since having kids, my thought processes shift a little bit and it doesn't seem as safe as it did before kids. It's amazing how priorities shift with that. Uh, so that's why I, I really wanna focus on the bikability and the walkability. I was just in the city manager's office this morning talking about the, um, active transportation plan, how to ke, keep that going and, and have a positive result in the path forward for, um, the city limits for Lakeport. One thing I really wanna focus on is angled spots on Main Street. Uh, we can fit a lot more cars for our local businesses if those spots are angled, safer for, um, parking, you're not trying to parallel park on Main Street. Also, bowlouts, if you're not familiar with bowlouts, uh, right where the crosswalks are, especially in downtown, you actually have to cross five lanes of traffic, uh, because there are, uh, on either side, there's a parking spot that fits an entire car. There's the north and south direction and there's the turn lane in the middle. Especially with little kids, those five lanes seem like the Sahara Desert, right? It is a big expanse to try to cross. So a bowlout would bridge that gap. It would, uh, take the crossing area and make it three lanes instead of five. It would, it would bowl out in those parking spots. So, um, I'm running out of time, but, uh, walkability and bikability are probably my own, my top priorities.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. I don't have a huge transportation plan. Um, I'm a general contractor and I would have a really hard time getting to work and bringing all my tools and my materials. So I'll be honest, it's not a, a high priority for me personally, but on the council, we've sat here and listened to a lot of people bring us their concerns about walkability and bikability. And I appreciate hearing those. I'd like to say that, um, the city council does hear that. It's considered when we take on projects such as the, the Kabotten Park that we built. Uh, there's still the possibility that we may be someday put, putting in a bike lane on Main Street. However, it was considered at this point and it was dashed at, at this point where, um, the angled parking is something that we, the city moved away from in, I believe, 2018. I could be wrong about the year, but it wasn't very long ago, when all of Main Street was torn up and redone and repaved and, and people don't seem to realize that in putting in the angled parking, that we're gonna lose the, the strip up the middle of the road that provides services to the businesses that are here. So, um, I'd like to say that the, I'm not in favor of the roundabouts on Forbes, don't think it needs it at all. Uh, roundabouts are about a half a million dollars each. Uh, we know that because we're putting in roundabouts on, uh, Lakeport Boulevard. Um, we potentially could have three or four of them on Lakeport Boulevard due to the large volume of traffic that we expect to have in the future. Um, I think that one of my transportation things is to keep up with our roads because if we don't keep up with our roads, um, our cars, uh, have a hard time and I have to hear it a lot from people that are not happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, we've already been working on the act of transportation plan. We've actually, um, moved the idea of going down 10th Street instead of traveling down 11th Street. We're already working currently on connecting the, um, sidewalks so that people that have certain kinds of mobility devices and stuff like that are already being attended to. Um, I think that the size of Lakeport, if you're any kind of bicyclist whatsoever, even a good skateboarder, you can go from, from border to border without too much trouble. You can get there in minutes. I see people that are driving, riding their bikes from Lucerne to, uh, to Lakeport to go to work. So I, I, people can get where they wanna go, it takes a little bit of time. As far as LTA is, I've served on that for, I don't know, 10 to 12 years. Um, it's a heavily subsidized situation. We also have a couple other problems called PIG or POW. And we have another one called Ride Links. And, um, actually, my feeling is, is that when a person doesn't have a car and they don't have a car payment and they don't have insurance, that they can ride a bus for a dollar when it's costing our taxpayers, taking S G one money and subsidizing every single ride by 93%. I question whether or not we're already doing too much. I think we're doing plenty. We're moving to get all new hydrogen buses down in, in the Clear Lake area that will connect to Lakeport. And at the same time, um, we have a new transit hub coming in down there. So basically, what I'm saying is, and when I see people that are too lazy to park over, um, down by the, the lake because they wanna park right in front of their business, I think there's a lot of whining going on. But I think walkability is a great thing. We're doing a lot of things to improve that. And I think that, um, that bike lanes would be nice, but all of these come at expense and I think our public works and our planning department are doing everything they can and a lot of public input to make it even better. So I think we're moving in a very positive direction. Anybody can get anywhere they want at 93% savings by taking transit and they can get even less by PIG or POW and by possible Ride Links. And they can even get to, uh, doctor's appointments out of the area, down to Santa Rosa and even Ukiah. So I think we're doing a pretty darn good job with what we have.
Thank you. Next question, and we'll start with Christina. What's, what specific strategies will you propose to attract and retain businesses in Lakeport? And how do you plan to create an environment that supports local entrepreneurship? And added to that, specifically, what would you do to help small businesses?
Okay, I'll do my best to sum all that up into one response. Um, I understand that the, uh, small businesses on Main Street and surrounding areas are struggling. What I would like to do, um, is something needs to change the accessibility to these, the storefronts on Main Street before I think anybody is going to invest in, um, any, in opening a business downtown. So my first thing would be to address either the speed or the bowlouts and then, um, to get new eyes on Main Street. I would almost want to, um, we're, we're going to have to recruit new businesses. Um, one of the, um, can, other candidates had mentioned, um, focusing on local, um, products, goods and services. I think that Lake County has plenty of small farms and small mom and pop type shops and that we're full of young entrepreneurs. We just need to facilitate them to make sure that they're, they have the right tools to be successful. Um, what was the second part of the question?
Um, what would you, how do you plan to create an environment that supports local entrepreneurship?
I feel that we need to train the, um, young individuals that are coming out into, um, the business world, whether that's skilled labor and, um, yeah, we just need to have better training for the young people that are coming out of school and don't have an idea of what they need to do. We need to train them better. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Kim?
So that is a, an important and challenging aspect. I think we get, uh, our revenues, our 60% of our revenue is from sales tax. Um, so it's, it's very important to the economics of the city. Aside from that, we do want a vibrant economy with things that people want to have. The question is multifaceted, but what businesses, what businesses can thrive here? I think, uh, there may be many. I love the idea of local goods, but what are our, what are our ass, our, um, assets? We have this beautiful lake, we have this beautiful environment, so tourism, of course, but how do we attract tourism? We need to work on the hotels, we need to make them, um, a place people want to come. I think we can also work to attract sort of focused advertising. We do have, for example, the, the fishing tournaments, but there are other kinds of groups that if we target that group and get into business, someone interested in a business, interested in serving that group, there may be success. For example, folks with, um, with dogs. I, we will go far and wide to have a vacation where we can take our dogs. We have a beautiful area here and if we just tweak our advertisement and services a bit, that group of people may come. I've heard, um, from others, the idea of the Audubon Society. I've heard a fabulous idea that, um, I won't steal from, uh, Mayor Froyo, but he had a great one about, um, some, I hope you're gonna share that till I'll stop.
Sure, you know, go ahead.
Okay, so where you can take a pontoon boat, for example, and give tours of our beautiful lake. We also have, people may not know, the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center has an amazing, uh, research and science, um, aspect going on. So there are plans to bring in training for that. We can host that kind of thing. I think how we support that is new business owners, uh, entrepreneurs need to be trained and have information about how to be successful in business, how to actually make a business plan, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon?
Uh, I wanna say there's a couple different strategies for helping small businesses. I-
I specifically think of Main Street and the vacancies that we have. We floated the idea of a vacant building registry and an ordinance in the city where landowners will not be allowed to keep their building vacant for these extended periods of times. That would come with penalties, small, but, you know, added up over time, it would make a large difference. One example is High Street Village recently went into new ownership, and the new owners of High Street Village lowered some rents. They were really encouraging to new businesses. Now High Street Village is flooded with business. Once a completely vacant shopping center is now thriving. We can do a very similar technique. That was all done by private individuals and private ownership, but for downtown specifically to encourage the landowners to help out these businesses a little bit. Also, I think there's a bit of a disconnect with the parks and the downtown. It seems like if we have an event at Library Park, the businesses up on Main Street get nothing from it. That can come with some wayfinding signage. You see it cities like Calistoga, they have a big, almost like you're in a shopping mall, that has a map and it shows where businesses are. I think we need to do some techniques to get these great events and like the new park, tons of people at the park, all hours of the day, to get them just to walk a little bit further downtown to help out our businesses. I think there's more that we can do. There's a lot we can't do. Inflation is something that is not in the city council's purview, something that we can tackle on our own. But the things that we can do, we need to do more of.
Thank you. Michael.
Times are tough. Times are tough in Lakeport. We all feel it. We all feel the inflation. We feel the fact that we have less disposable income at the end of the month. Times are tough, but they're not just tough in Lakeport. They're tough up and down the state, and they're tough in this country. We're at a place where it's not unusual to go to towns and see businesses, not be in business anymore, to see them closed up and gone. We are struggling with that right now. I would really like to see this community become infused with visitors. I think I'm not looking for tourists to save what's going on. I think that we have an ideal place for people to come and visit. I want to see our motels cleaned up. Currently, I can't recommend to family or friends to come and stay in the motels that are in our city. I think that we can offer them incentives to get them on board to want to go along with the vision. I also think that the people that own these buildings in the downtown, they're struggling too with these empty buildings. They're not necessarily greedy people. They haven't had a raise in a long time. And so, we need to pull these people in. We need to pull in everybody that is willing to come and get together. That is the spirit of the Main Street Association, who at this point is turning it around and finding their way. It has a really dedicated man that's the president, Bob Santana. I hope to get together again and work with the Main Street Association and the business owners and the building owners, and to clean up this city and for it to become a place that when people drive here for the first time and they drive through Main Street, that they are wowed by what they see. That's how we will attract people that want to come live here. It will attract people that want to come back year after year, and will attract investors. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny.
So with minimum wage ever rising, and we had evidence of a couple businesses going out. One came from Lucerne, came here. I talked to Alex over at Omera's, and literally, he told me in 2020 that minimum wage took all this profit, and eventually, he took them out of business. But what happened was, in the end, because of the inflation, the lack of disposable income, people were going into a restaurant and ordering two beers and one meal and split. I heard from another bartender the other day, people are saying, that's the cheapest thing on your menu. I have a really hard time under this current economic condition that I would even recommend that anybody take their life savings and go into Lakeport and open up a business. Do you have a business that can compete with the offerings of, you know, the big box stores online that can deliver it at a price to their door? Can you do that and still make a profit? This is a very tricky climate. I gave two classes at Fairmont College when it was up there, and it was an entrepreneur's class. And all I did was tell them all the reasons why you probably shouldn't open your own business. I showed them electrical things. Can you put this in, or do you have to hire an electrician? Can you change ballast up in your lights? Can you do minimal plumbing without costing yourself $160 for an office visit? Maybe they'll be there in three days. Being in business now is the most difficult in history. Even the Business Walk said locals are suffering. I'm glad to see that High Street is doing well, getting lower rent helps a lot. But this is a devastating climate they're in now. Inflation is taking away everybody's money and power. Power, as I've seen people come into my business and say, I would have bought this and this and that, but my P Geneva was $600. No one's helping us at the P U C. They're letting us just rip us off and driving us further into like depriving us of food and the things we need. Gas prices are so ridiculous, but yet you can go, you know, east, and they're $2 to $3. We are being picked clean. And to ask someone to go out, invest their life savings, or their mom and dad's, to open up a business, when 80% of all restaurants close within the first two years, and the rest of them gone another year, I don't know that I would do that.
Thank you. Carl.
My plan for the downtown would attract and retain businesses. In January and February of this year, I took it upon myself to survey the retail and the food and beverage business owners and managers in the area that I wish to put in a new traffic pattern. And I told them my plan, and there's only, at that time, there were only 29 such businesses in the 0.6 mile strip of our city, where we have so many vacancies and other things that aren't retail. It truly should be just a wonderful place to shop and dine and enjoy yourself. Well, 29, and many of these, a few of these businesses have gone out of business, they've been sold. It's just a snapshot of the 29. And of those willing to say yes or no, I only had three with no response. I have 85% that agree with my plan. That's 22 out of 26 business owners and managers. And I have them, this is my tire thing with a map of the city I made very, and everyone signed, so I have their names and their contact information and the business name. So, any questions you have for those business owners, I know who they are, and I know what they need. I talked, some people talking to me for an hour, a half an hour. Everyone had a different situation. I learned many things about our Main Street. But very briefly, it's, now we have three lanes of moving traffic. That middle lane is a moving lane of traffic. All I want to do is have one lane of traffic northbound between Martin and 11th, and then angle parking on both sides. That's my plan in a nutshell.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Kim. And this question has a little bit of a background explanation for it. So let me read this sort of preamble. So the city of Lakeport handles cannabis differently than other jurisdictions in Lake County. Personal cultivation is allowed, but only indoors in accessory structures with limited canopy. Cannabis businesses are allowed within commercial districts, excuse me, such as industrial. What makes Lakeport most different, perhaps, is that storefront retail is not allowed. Neither are temporary cannabis events. In a foreland vote in October, the Lakeport Planning Commission recommended permitting retail storefront businesses, cannabis businesses, and permitting temporary cannabis events. However, in a January meeting that included public input that was mostly against such measures, the Lakeport City Council chose not to pursue an ordinance change, a new ordinance to change commercial cannabis rules. So with that prelude, what is your stance on commercial cannabis and the city's current rules? How would you recommend changing or improving them? And would you support retail dispensaries on Main Street proper and in major retail zones?
Okay, thank you for the preamble and the question. This brings me to a philosophy of mine that it's not Kim Coste who decides what should happen in the city of Lakeport. It's the people in Lakeport who decide what should happen. So I'm very interested in hearing from all interested members of the community who want to come and voice their opinion about what they would like to see. My concerns thus far, and the reason that I voted no on those events, were, as Lakeport moves forward into grappling with this, because it's a bit of a controversial issue, it seems, I want to be careful, the messaging that we're giving to our children. I want to be careful, there's already this huge problem with vaping and smoking and with alcohol use. Those things are activities that adults are free to choose. But I think we have to be very careful about how we market anything, and cannabis would be among that, so that we're mindful of the impressions that we're giving to our youngest, most vulnerable folk. So I'm not, I'm not straight up against any of the things that have been proposed here. I want to have more of a conversation about how we do that in a way that's safe and family friendly. The problem with the event that I currently would like to hear from citizens on, if it's held outdoors, then you have the smoke and such that is into the environment. We're not really, that's not really unusual for us anymore. But law enforcement explains that there's not a simple way to gauge the level of someone's influence, how much they're under the influence of cannabis. So that was a little bit uncomfortable. Those things I'd like to wrestle through with community members before we make decisions about putting retail cannabis stores on downtown Main Street.
Thank you. Brandon.
I think that we should amend our ordinance to allow retail cannabis within the city limits and on Main Street. I think it is time to get in step with the state. It's allowed by the state. And to hold out just for the city, I don't know is the right move. I think it's just a little behind the times. The events are where I'm not so sure on. Because the thing with retail, you drive past it, you don't have to go into the store. If somebody that chooses to, they can go into the store, just like a liquor store, just like a bar, go to their home, enjoy whatever they want to do in the privacy of their own home. The problem that I have with events, specifically the one that was proposed at the January council meeting, is it was proposed to be held at the Lake County Fair with retail sales and use. At the time, there was the Conocta Christian Academy just downwind of that area. The kids, the people in that area, they didn't choose. They didn't have the option to drive past the store. They're in the direct line of that public event. So the events, especially outdoor, is something that I'm a lot more hesitant on the retail. I think it's time that we get with the times. I think we should amend our ordinance to allow retail cannabis sales in the city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael.
I'm not in favor of quote unquote getting with the times. I believe that that's why we have local control. We appreciate that each city can create their own ordinance. I'd like to say that prior to being on the council, I was on the planning commission, the Lakeport Planning Commission for four years, and we helped craft the ordinance that's here. And I'd like to proudly say that Kenny Parlet is the only other person that was on the council that's up here tonight that was on the city council. The planning commission and the council came together in this room, and we talked it out, hashed it out. Doesn't mean we have the same views. I'm proud of the ordinance we have. I'm, like Kim, I'm very concerned about having marijuana right in the faces of our children. I'm perfectly fine with the cannabis business that's in the commercial area that's outside of the city limits. I feel like we're not depriving our customers, our people becoming customers, and they have other access to cannabis. So I'm happy, and I'm not saying that I wouldn't change it. I'm saying I'm not, I'm not in favor of changing to opening up retail cannabis. I don't think that that's a good look for our downtown. I don't think that that's a good look for a place where we want to get people to come and visit us. Lake County already has a perception problem in the rest of the state. There's a lot of people that think that this is, this is a place where people just come to do drugs. People that live here just do drugs, and I'd like to shake that perception. So, I'm in favor of it the way it is. I think if someone was to bring another common sense idea, we are always open to changing our minds and changing the ordinance as needed. Thanks.
Thank you. Kenny.
Yeah, I think that one of the worst things that ever happened to rural California was the legalization of marijuana up in Humboldt and parts of Mendocino County, cities like Garberville, Laytonville, Mendocino, and Lake County, and Lucerne, where people were, used to be able to sell pot for $10 or $1200. It was so much more vibrant. They had the disposable income, they had money to do what they did. If you go to Garberville now, and you go to Laytonville particularly, it is absolutely a ghost town. Nevertheless, I believe that cannabis is something that your community needs to decide on. We did not take action at that time. That does not mean we are not open to it. But I felt that there was a highly polarized, stigmatized group of people in here that stigmatized cannabis users as some kind of old hippie dudes. And the amount of people that actually go in and use this stuff medically for sleep disorders and pain control, absent of the pharmaceuticals that cause so much harm and so much addiction and have caused the opioid thing, it could be an absolute, you know, good thing for them. But you in this community, and I would like to get a broad base, maybe even have an open forum where everyone can come in. The particular day we had here, we had a crowd that just thought that anybody that smoked weed was a loser and a dirtbag and was going to do cocaine and everything. I don't think that's necessarily so. I'm not to decide that. But I will tell you that according to scientific research, there's so many benefits, and whether it's pain reduction and sleep problems and all those things, I think it could be something. But that is not for me to decide. I feel that this is a decision that the city needs to make. I can take it or leave it. I've never been a big cannabis user, but I accept the fact that it could be something, an alternative, to going to the doctor and getting all these pharmaceuticals pushed down everybody's throat, constantly having them addicted. So I'd like to hear from you in a forum with equality in the room that we're armed.
Thank you. Carl.
Well, I'd like to point out right away that myself, if I'm elected, it's my first time in such a position, and I will be learning a lot every day. It's going to be a lot of work, absolutely. That's why I'm happy. I'm retired, I have a little time to put into it. And I know that Michael Green is very knowledgeable on this subject. He's our current supervisor, and I would very much like to get ahold of him if I ever have to vote on such an issue, because he'll tell me the complexity of it. I, oh, sorry, Kenny.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My alarm company.
Okay. And I've had chances in this last year to talk with Supervisor Green about many issues. He is very knowledgeable. I really respect him. And just by coincidence, three days ago, I was at my friend's house in Kelseyville picking grapes, apples and pears. Apples and pears are ready right now. Grapes are still coming in. And he showed me mature marijuana plants. I'd never seen them. And he told me all about how he relaxes with that. It has no side effects like alcohol, is what he was telling me. And I can definitely see the niceness of growing your own like that, the purity of it, taking care of your body, and just relax. Just an amazing talk we had about it. So I'm learning all the time about cannabis, and I'm very naive on the subject.
Thank you. Christina.
Okay, just to touch on a few things, I agree with offering and saying yes to retail on on Main Street for cannabis. I think any type of foot traffic at this point is foot traffic. The chances of them going in, getting their product, and walking down to get a coffee or stop at a shop, pretty likely. If we keep saying no, we won't get very far. So I feel like there comes a point after we say yes, that there's a design review that you can actually control how the front of the retail building, or how they actually display their business. So I feel like, once we're at that point, you know, you can really fine tune how you would like to have it perceived from the Main Street. That's very important. As far as the event that was brought up last January, you guys had said, I don't want to miss opportunities like that when people are trying to come into the area and have an event, but I do realize, I think it was so alien at the time that we didn't really have the chance to explore the idea of it. Come to find out that it was held on a Saturday in the proximity to the KCA, probably would not have been an issue, but, you know, maybe they'll come again and revisit it to the council, and, you know, you guys can figure out what went wrong and what went right, and grow off of that. But yes, I am for retail on Main Street.
Thank you. Okay, the next question will start with Brandon, and this also has a little bit of an explanation to it. With the demolition of the West Shore Pool, the city of Lakeport no longer has a swimming pool that can be accessed by the general public. Now, parents in Lakeport need to find another pool where their children can learn to swim. That's important for several reasons, beyond the fact that Lake County is home to Clearlake, the largest freshwater lake totally within California's boundaries. The most important reason is that drowning is the number one cause of death for children ages one to four in the United States, and in May, the Centers for Disease Control issued a report that said drowning deaths are on the rise in the United States following decades of decline. That report also found that making swimming lessons accessible can save lives, because almost forty million adults in the U.S. don't know how to swim. What is your opinion on having a pool in Lakeport? Where does it fall on your list of priorities? And if you support it, how, as a member of the Lakeport City Council, do you plan to work to bring a pool back to the community?
This is something I could talk for hours about. I swam on Channel Cats when I was a kid. That's where I learned how to swim properly. I think to not have a pool in our city is a real shame. I'm the vice chair of the Lake County Recreation Agency, a joint powers authority that was formed originally with the sole purpose of getting a pool back in the area for our residents, for swim lessons, for the kids. Pools come at a really steep price tag, though. We did have plans to build a pool, however, it was going to cost a lot of money. In order to do that, we decided not to put a tax measure on the ballot this year. That was how we were going to fund the building of a new pool facility. It just wasn't the right time to add more taxes for our residents. Even with the outcome of a pool, it just wasn't the right time. There's another avenue that we're pursuing actively, and that is one with the old Quail Run. Now it is owned by Tribal Health, who has a great working relationship with the city, and that butts right up to West Side Park and the Dog Park of West Side Park. So an idea that I've been working with the city manager on is, if Tribal Health does not need the outdoor pool, which it sounds like they don't, the city would be able to potentially take over that pool. We put in a little bridge to the Dog Park that's converted into a parking lot. The Dog Park is relocated to a different area of West Side Park. Now we have a pool that is ready to go for our residents tomorrow. I mean, we just have to work with the owner of that pool, which we are actively doing.
Thank you. Michael.
Yeah, no, I appreciate working with Brandon on the Rec Authority towards a pool. The city of Lakeport is doing their darned best. As you pointed out, we need a pool here. We need a pool because it's hot here. We need a pool because there's a big lake there, and we need to teach our children to swim. We need a pool because it brings the community together. Like Councilman Disney just spoke to, these pools are more expensive than I even imagined. I was fortunate enough to be a part of the Rec Authority before it was the Rec Authority. I got on an airplane, I was taken with supervisors and people from Clearlake and the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We flew to Sacramento, we saw some gorgeous pools, and that's where this thing started. The cost of these are staggering. Putting the cost on the taxpayers of the entire county in the form of raising their property taxes a little bit, right now, is what Brandon's been speaking to, and it's a hard ask. It's a hard ask to ask people in other communities to help sponsor a pool that's here. I would really like to see more pools in the entire county, but because I represent Lakeport, I'd like to see what we can do to get a pool here in Lakeport. As Councilmember Disney was speaking, we are in talks with Tribal Health in trying to make that pool. It's a Band-Aid kind of fix, but to be honest, it's a good idea. It's how we can get something now. We have a property at the end of Charlie Jolen Way, we hope someday to build a brand-new community pool there. That's what we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny.
Well, I couldn't agree more with almost everything that was said, and I think learning how to swim is imperative. My sister ran a daycare, she taught over twenty-five kids how to swim in her pool in the backyard. And when we had the pool, interesting thing was, our costs were ten thousand dollars a year. We could never get the county to even pay their half of the five thousand, even though seventy percent of the people that used the pool were out of the city. So when we saw these projects, and they were magnificent projects, as Michael has just mentioned, but if we had one of you in there that is a multi-multi-millionaire and donated the pool, the annual maintenance of the pools that we were looking at was two-hundred-forty-thousand dollars a year, we couldn't pay for chlorine, let alone the rest of the maintenance. So it's a pie-in-the-sky idea. Tribal Health is an incredible community partner. I think this is, you know, while it may be a Band-Aid, it is a pool. While our fireworks sales have been supporting, and I love supporting the Channel Cats, it's one of the best organizations, and that's why I strongly recommend that they be able to make all that money in that, you know, that one week, so they can support those programs, and I think it's wonderful. I would hope that we can come to negotiations and use that pool, but when you have very limited funds, there is little chance that we are going to get a pool, let alone be able to maintain it unless one of you millionaires comes through and will give us ten or twenty years of maintenance. It's just something that is going to be very difficult to pencil out. Having recreation alone, like a running path or a pickleball court, is expensive enough, but maintenance is pretty reasonable. Swimming pools, I've always said, never buy a jet ski, get it from Disney, never rent a boat, never buy a boat, get it from Disney, never have an in-ground pool or an in-ground hot tub. They are a hole that money gets dumped into, and in a city, it can be unbelievable. We're not Roseville, we're not Bakersfield, so that's my feelings on that. Love swimming pools, I love swimming, it's great.
Thank you. Carl.
Councilmembers Disney, Froyo, and Parlette have pretty much said that the problem will be solved if Tribal Health agrees, and so, I think that's wonderful, absolutely wonderful. I am a big fan of Quail Run, I am a big fan of their pools, and that's not a Band-Aid, that's an awesome pool. That is an absolutely awesome pool, and I can't, I wouldn't even imagine a better pool than what Quail Run has. And they also have a very nice indoor pool, which also put us on the map if that were available again. Well, that's mainly my answer on that. I also, my father was an engineer, passed away a year and a half ago, very well-known in the community, Hank Porter, flood control director, and prior to that worked for Cliff and Nancy Resika. He designed the pool at Conacta Harbor Inn, the outdoor pool. A very tricky thing, because there is a spring, a divert into water. You want to see another beautiful pool in the county, which is on our side of the lake, actually, just go visit Conacta Harbor Inn. I'm very proud of that pool because of all my father did for it. And, oh, I just want to point out, as long as we're on pools, that my father told me quite often as a child, you never want to let the water get out of an outdoor pool, because it will pop out of the ground and it will be destroyed. So I would like to, I'm kind of curious, not as a camp candidate, but as a member of the community, why, how the pool got destroyed, and why maybe the water wasn't maintained or something like that? Because I learned to swim in that pool from Michelle Figg, and I'm very grateful.
You're talking about West Shore Pool?
Yes.
That is a long, sad story. Talk to me afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
She wrote a booklet on it.
Thank you, Carl. Christina.
I won't take up too much time on this. I am for whatever we can do as a community, whether it's collaborating with Tribal Health or another nonprofit, or exploring other ways to get a pool. I think that the community in itself, in its longevity and its lifetime for the pool outweighs the possible, you know, hurt to the pocket, in the long run. I know, I don't think we should have put a tax on it to do it that way. I think that you guys made a great decision on that, but we should revisit it down the road, absolutely. The future of our residents need it, the seniors, I don't know, I just think water in the pool is just a, it's a community thing. It is something that really brings people together, it's healthy. So that sums it up for me. I'm pro-pool, absolutely.
Thank you. Kim.
Who could not be pro-pool? I think we're all in agreement, and it really is a very hard reality. I, and feel free to shout out, over my time, but I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-five million dollars or something like that for the pool, and then plus with the maintenance that has already been noted in this time of inflation and hard times at any stretch. So that's why it didn't happen, but I love the idea of trying to think, again, creative problem solving, maybe we'll get fortunate right here in Lakeport with Tribal Health. They're great partners, you know, they're concerned about health and well-being, so that could be awesome. I totally agree with the importance of swimming lessons for safety. I grew up with that, didn't realize how wonderful that was, that was a marvelous thing to have. So Conacta Harbor Inn isn't inside of Lakeport, but if we strike out on one possibility, we should keep looking for others, for creative solutions to have a pool available. I don't know if it's even feasible for private citizens who have a pool in their yard to open up a business in Lakeport, by where they teach people to swim. If so, that could meet a couple of needs. It could be an economic boost, and we'd get that done. The other thing is that, and I'm sure there's plenty of reasons not to do this, it's just brainstorming, well, we might have to shift our point of view. If we really want a pool to teach people to swim, maybe we have to have something a little less glamorous, something, you know, an above-ground pool that's good, that will last, it's more affordable, it's there, it's serving a purpose. I have a secret desire that goes with that, because we're talking about safety for our human partners, but I would love to have a duck diving pool for dogs here, because it would be a tourism draw, I'm sure it would be a benefit, so those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, and we'll start with Michael. So the Board of Supervisors recently approved a retail tobacco licensing ordinance, which also is expected to go before the city councils of both Clearlake and Lakeport at some point. It would set more rules for retailers with a special focus on protecting youth. Here's an example of why this is important. California has banned the sale of most flavored e-cigarettes since December twenty-first of 2022. However, flavored e-cigarettes are still available for purchase in shops within the city of Lakeport, as was confirmed by a speaker at last week's Lakeport City Council meeting. If elected, would you vote for the retail tobacco licensing ordinance in Lakeport? Why or why not?
Thank you. Absolutely, I would vote in favor of it. For reasons I mentioned on that night, I'm worried about the children. I think that people, adults that smoke started out when they were young. I started smoking because it was easy to get. My dad had a carton, it was always in the top drawer of his dresser, and I could take a pack or two. Now, that pack might last me a couple of months, but it was the gateway to doing other things. I mean, we talk about marijuana as being a gateway drug, but, you know, when you're fourteen, fifteen, and you start smoking tobacco, you start thinking, well, this isn't so bad, our parents told us not to, and it's okay, and, you know, you start thinking, the beer in the refrigerator looks good, and someone hands you something else, and you start puffing on it. I really think that at those ages, our children are very impressionable, and I'd like to keep them as protected as possible by seeing the current laws enforced about tobacco. I don't think that the new tobacco ordinance, as it's been rolled out, I don't think it's severe, in some ways, I don't think it's severe enough, but that can be debated. What cannot be debated is that our children need to be kept away from tobacco products, especially vaping, which is so much stronger than just smoking tobacco. These kids are addicted to it, it's creating social problems at school and at home, and I'd like to do whatever we can to prevent it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny.
So I was very outspoken at the last meeting, and I did some surveys while I was away, and I talked to a number of high school students that just recently graduated. They said they have absolutely zero problems getting their hands on tobacco or cannabis at school, and they don't have to go in and buy it because they have someone that already buys it somewhere. And the nice thing about vapes is that you can't tell the difference between a tobacco vape, which are horrible, because they have, you know, ten, fifteen, a hundred times more tobacco in there, but they also told me they do not know a single student. I talked to my wife, who works at the store every day, is outside, sometimes smoking. She hasn't seen anyone under thirty smoking a cigarette. This is a whole different realm. Cigarette smoking, per se, in cigarette packs is like something that is done by forty and up, and ninety percent of them have left the building when it comes to tobacco, mainly because it's a hundred and fifty bucks a carton for cigarettes. They outlawed flavored tobaccos for adults, which makes no sense to me, because it's already against the law for kids to get it. But the thing that I see as an absolute travesty, a travesty, is that they want, and I have no fear of this, I don't even carry vapes, and kids never are going to buy cigarettes in my retail establishment, but when you have a law that says first offense, thirty-day suspension, one thousand dollar fine, these people have never had a kid that they said no, and they did something they weren't supposed to. They never had a wife that said, don't use the credit card, and they did. And you're going to tell me first offense, and when someone says, I don't think it's harsh enough, they've never been in retail where someone can do anything they want. I had a girl that says, I told her, if Santa Claus walks in the door, you cart him. And she got busted. So this is so ridiculous, the penalties.
Thank you. Carl.
I very much appreciate having Councilmember Parlette with us here tonight, because he does bring a unique perspective and experience that none of us know about, so I really, really appreciate that. And of course, I work with children, I'm very concerned about their health. I would want to talk more with Kenny and also with our police chief, Strobe, to make sure I totally understand before I vote, but I mean, if I can protect just one child, I would do it, absolutely, so.
Thank you. Christina.
I'm in favor of the retail ordinance as well, in not having, trying to keep it away from the children as much as possible, because I do believe that Councilmember Parlette does definitely have a strong does definitely have a strong point with the vape versus tobacco. But just keeping as much control over it as we can, I think is the best way to go.
Thank you. Kim?
So I unfortunately was not at that meeting and I will admit that I have not come back to watch that presentation. This is a great reminder that I need to. I was visiting a friend in the ICU, just so everyone knew. So in general, unless it is completely unrealistic in some kind of a way, I am for the ordinance. I am for the general concept of the ordinance. This falls right in line with trying to keep our children safe. And the, both the tobacco and the vapes are a huge health problem. They're a big problem at the schools. I just want to make a comment on the health issue. I've listened to a couple of presentations by some folks that do research on this. And even in shared housing, when you have shared walls, if you don't smoke in your unit, you and your children are still getting measurable amounts of secondhand smoke from your neighbors who are vaping or smoking. So I'm only mentioning that to say the power of the substance is significant and I think we owe it to our children to help dissuade them from going there, to not make it easy for that to happen.
Thank you. Brandon?
So just to kind of clarify on the meeting that was held last Tuesday, this ordinance would be in line with the rest of the county. The county board of supervisors is already on board with the ordinance. And what it would do is just enforce and give penalties to retailers that sell any tobacco products, cigarettes, chewing tobacco, vapes, to children under the age of 21. And that first offense, if you are caught, is a 30-day suspension of your license and a $1,000 fine. First offense, and I am okay with that. If you are selling these products to minors, whether it's the store owner themselves or an employee, I have young employees that work for me. It's all about the training. And if you don't have trust in that employee to not follow the law, then maybe they shouldn't be working for you. I was ready to vote yes on that item last Tuesday. I'm ready to vote yes on that item tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, we will start with Kenny. What's your stance on housing development in Lakeport? And how do you plan to address the challenges related to affordability and accessibility for our community members? And as part of addressing those housing needs, how do you feel about mixed-use permitting in the downtown area, such as allowing businesses on the first floor and residences on upper floors?
I'll answer that part first. I think mixed-use is brilliant. They do it all over Europe. You'll have a pub downstairs and you'll have a housing up above. I think we actually have some of those places in Lakeport and that may be a good solution. The problem with Lakeport, and we've heard it over and over at council meetings, is that we do not have family dwellings that are affordable. And if you know the cost to build, $400, $500 a foot, you could get an 1,100 square foot house for over half a million dollars. Nobody's going to build it because nobody's going to buy it because they need a bigger house than 1,100 square feet. The affordability has escaped us. It is not possible to build affordable housing in the way that we want for family housing, which is discouraging, you know, doctors and x-ray technicians and all kinds of professionals that are looking for homes. They're going to have to find one that's already here because you can get it cheaper than you could build a bigger one. It is a horrible problem. We need affordable housing, but the families are, have been priced out of business. I understand that Mark Oragzani is trying to build something. He's getting his stuff for wholesale and he's still having issues trying to build affordable housing. It's just priced out of existence. It's like a swimming pool. It's a time when those things are going to be very difficult to deal with. We need to maybe look at townhouses, we need to look at condos maybe in the future. But the idea of building a nice family house for a young couple to buy is out of the question. Their disposable incomes are dropping like crazy. The affordability of having a, you know, a $3,500 house payment. And then in this fire area, fire insurance, it's negating many of the deals that real estate people are making because they're getting all this upcharge on that. It's a very sad situation for Lakeport and we've heard it at the council many times. What can we do to get, you know, middle-family houses? It's not an easy fix. It is going to be a really tough thing unless we have a couple millionaires that want to do that. So look, we're going to have some tough luck with that.
But the millionaires are already going to pay for the pool.
Add it to the list.
Add it to the list. Okay, Carl, you're next.
Well, I applaud the efforts of the city to make housing affordable. I, I only have one kind of newsletter I get every week and it's from our state attorney general, Rob Bonta. So I spend about five minutes reading what he writes in his office in Sacramento. It's, I find it fascinating and I really learn about a lot of topics. This is one that he's very keen on. I just want the public to know that if you don't move forward, you get sued by the state. And I'm very proud of Lakeport. I think I've heard we've got $10 million designated for housing and we're working on using it. It's a lot of money for a little Lakeport. And since I have some time, I'll just read to you what Rob Bonta wrote yesterday. He's constantly on this topic. Tackling our state's housing crisis is going to take all of us working in unison. This week, two housing bills that I was proud to sponsor were signed into law. A great example, DOJ working with the legislature and the governor to advance real solutions and create more opportunities for housing. I sponsored Assembly Bill 1893 to ensure the local governments plan for their community's housing needs and to make it clear to local governments that there are consequences for denying low- or moderate-income housing development projects. It also ensures housing will still be built when local governments fall short. Working hand-in-hand with this new law, Senate Bill 1037, creates additional penalties for wrongfully denying homes to Californians desperately need. Money that will in turn be used to fund local affordable housing. So it's very serious. It's a national problem and even more serious for our state.
Thank you. Christina?
Thank you, Elizabeth. I need a cup of coffee. Housing, okay. So yes, I know that we need it. How I feel about bringing housing into the area? We all need, what my goal is, is to bring a whole variety of housing. I want, I will bring and would like to see single-family homes around areas that will accommodate single-family homes. And the, there are so many other types of housing that I feel like we are missing out on. One of them is mixed-use. Councilmember Parley touched on triplexes and duplexes. Those will all come about. I think the way that we go about the affordability part of it is we have to look for existing infrastructure to offset the cost of building. The houses that you referred to, councilmember, if you're familiar, that there's infrastructure currently there. So that is allowing the builder to, you know, be that much more close to making it pencil because that's what's going to have to happen. We need a variety of housing. I would love to see mixed condos, cottage housing. All of these are going to be, they don't have to be big. Not everybody needs a three-bedroom, two-bath house. So coming up with what people need, I feel is the best way. Also with those Senate bills, using existing infrastructure like churches or underutilized parking lots are ways that we can look at building in the dense city downtown.
Thank you. Kim?
Could you read it again? And I'm interested in a little bit more information of accessibility. What is the term that we're really asking about? What does it mean?
Well, this was a submitted question, so I'm not quite sure. But what's your stance on housing development in Lakeport? And how do you plan to address the challenges related to affordability and accessibility for our community members? As part, and as part of addressing that, how do you feel about mixed-use? I'm thinking the accessibility comes with the affordability. They're not talking about physical accessibility. That's how I read that question.
Okay, thank you. So clearly we have housing, some housing needs. The whole state of California does. But this, it's not a one-size-fits-all kind of a need. We need to look at Lake County versus some other counties. We need to look at Lakeport versus some other cities. And every six years, the state, it does some analysis of that and gives us a regional housing needs assessment. There's points of view on that, how helpful it is or isn't, but it is one version of a guide. We are, and I believe, our fifth year of this cycle and we have, the one category that we have not touched at all is the moderate and above housing. It is the area of struggle. We have built all, well, we have, yes, we have filled all but four of our lower-income housing, under-moderate kind of housing units. So we've done pretty well there and we have other projects that are approved, ready to go. So that's good. I think we need to be balanced. We need to make sure for one thing, that these projects are safe and that we don't get too heavily, the state of California is very much, what they're funding because of the need across the state is lower-income housing. And that is a need, but I think here in Lakeport, we have to say, where is the balance in our need? So we have to just stay within the law, make good choices for all types of housing and also figure out how to exercise our local control to try to get those moderate-income housings for professionals, paraprofessionals. And yes, I think mixed-use housing is a fabulous option and it would also bring vibrancy to the downtown. So I'm for that as well. Creative thinking again is necessary on this point.
Thank you. Brandon?
I think there's several challenges when it comes to housing. On one hand, we do need the higher-income housing for our healthcare professionals, teachers, city workers, people that can afford to live in a single-family residence. However, we also have a workforce that cannot afford to live in those types of houses. And we have builders and construction workers that can build the house but can't fetch what they would get for that same house in a bigger area. The cost of the materials is the same whether you build a house in Lakeport or in somewhere in the Bay Area. So these builders are choosing to not build in Lakeport because they can make a whole lot more money off of it. I think we also need to have a ground-up approach to start with our workforce housing. That way, places like Marshalls and Tractor Supply Co. and other retail opportunities will have employees that can actually work these stores. As far as the mixed-use goes, I think it, I think everybody would be all for it to see people out and about and walking. It does go back to walkability and bikeability, to have people that live in a retail home or in the downtown that can also walk to work, can shop right where they live is a no-brainer.
Thank you. Michael?
This is hard to say, but I've been a general contractor since 1990. I've been in the construction business for 45 years. I have built homes, apartments, shopping centers, commercial buildings. If you have something that you want built, you have the money and you can pay me for the cost of labor and materials, I'll start tomorrow. We'll start this process right away. And I'm being facetious, but I'm not. The problem is, is right now that the economics don't pencil out. They don't pencil out here in the city of Lakeport yet. What we're looking at right now is interest rates are starting to head down and that will be very helpful. I think Lakeport would take anything. I think at this point, you know, not quite anything, but we're looking at, we have, as councilmember Disney stated, we have need for everything. I mean, this city hasn't grown in the time that I've been here. And every year, when I look at the sign that says, "Welcome to Lakeport", this is the population, I hope that it doesn't dip below 5,000. It's not a Lakeport problem, it's a state problem, it's a national problem, but it is hard to attract people that want to come here and spend that kind of money. On the one hand, what we have going for us is we have the most beautiful place. I'm a little biased. Our mountain, our lake, our city, it's a wonderful place. It's a great place to raise your kids. I'm hoping, thank you, Elizabeth, I'm hoping that something breaks and I'd like to see our town, again, economic ripple of making our place look better and becoming economically viable, will attract people that want to come here and they'll want to invest. I've talked to people like this. I haven't quite got them convinced to buy, to buy into the program, but they like the idea and that's what we need. We need to get people that see a better, more vibrant Lakeport. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're coming up on close to two hours now, so we're going to go into our closing statements. And this is your opportunity, each and every one of you, to maybe touch on something that you got interrupted by me earlier in the evening on. Or it's something we didn't even bring up because obviously there's a lot of, there were a lot of questions tonight. There's a lot of candidates. We couldn't work through everything. So this is really your time to pick on what you want to talk about. And we're going to go in reverse alphabetical order. So we will start, we'll start with Christina.
Oh, man. Okay. I appreciate all of you coming out tonight. I usually do a lot better in public, in public speaking, so I didn't really prepare. I was like, "I got this." You know, they'll see my enthusiasm. I am just bested in this whole entire area and I've had the best time actually listening for the first time for you guys to actually hear your opinions on some things that I've had my own opinions on. And we have a lot of common ground. I feel that we, we all want the same housing. We have the, you know, similar visions for, for Lakeport as a whole. I just think we have different roads of how to get there. My main things that I want to touch on, obviously, are the connectivity. I really want to focus on our senior and our aging community. They're a huge part of our, of our demographic here. And I just feel like they might be, they're just a very crucial part of our downtown in our, in our area. Another thing is, yeah, I just, I, I don't need to space it out, but I am drawing a blank. You're welcome to, can I plug my Facebook?
Absolutely.
Okay, if you are able to, go to my Facebook page, Christina Price for City Council 2024. It has a lot of my views, my opinions, my events that I'll be hosting. If there's any way that I can get in front of anybody who doesn't know me, who you think that should know me, feel free to reach out. I'm looking forward to developing a lot of relationships for collaboration in the future with the city and all of our entities. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Carl?
Hi. I appreciate all the current members of the city council very much for what they're doing for our city. Very, very much respect what you do. And Christina also, I know you're working very hard for our city, the planning commission and other activities. And I also want to thank you, Elizabeth, for hosting this amazing experience. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Carl. Kenny?
So obviously, if you've been paying any attention, you see that what I bring along with my leadership, business, political experience, I have to tell you, I'm a prolific reader and researcher with a vast knowledge of subjects and topics that the average bystander has no knowledge of, including finance, economics, scientific, health, geopolitical affairs. And one of the most important things that I bring is that I work every day with boots on the ground. I was one of those workers that worked every minute during COVID. I worked every minute during the evacuations. I worked with generators during the PSS. I am out there talking to people every day that doesn't afford that possibility to somebody that's doing necessarily boat rentals or an upscale real estate broker. I see the realities and that's why I just can't believe that someone thinks first offense, $1,000 fine, you're out of here. If you can't train your people better than that, you need to get rid of them. Okay, well, you've obviously never been in retail and that's why ABC has a tiered thing. They get a fine, then they get a fine, then the retailer gets a fine. Third offense, you get a 30-day suspension. The lady that did the tobacco said she caught every single retailer selling to a minor. That means we wouldn't have any tobacco available in Lakeport for 30 days anywhere because they would all be suspended. Ridiculous. But anyway, what I want to let you know is, you can tell, I'm- But anyway, what I want to let you know is, you can tell, I'm passionate about this. I love this town. I've been here probably longer than anybody in here. And I have dedicated, I don't just work five days a week. I work three hundred and fifty-five days a year to keep my business open. My wife and I work seven days a week. I'm on the council because I care about the city of Lakeport and I don't want someone coming in here that doesn't understand all of the intricacies of local government and what it means and all those different numbers and different alphabet soup stuff. I understand those things. So this is not going to be some amateur hour, solve the problems of Lakeport. I'm telling you, you need to really look hard at your candidates for city council, what they know.
Thank you. Michael?
I get to follow that? Thank you, thank you. Well, I'd like to say thank you, thank you to everybody for coming out and paying attention and everybody that will potentially be watching this in the different social media. The people that watch care enough about what's going on in their community and we'd like to see more of that. We'd like to see the council chambers filled every time we come in and it's always special when we do. I never expected to be the mayor of Lakeport. I never expected to be on the council. I didn't study for this. I didn't think I would ever be on the planning commission. This is just sort of where life led me. It's a three hundred dollar a month job. And if you work this job, and I think most of the council members do, and the new council members, if they make it, they'll find out how hard this job can be when you pour yourself into it. I enjoy pouring myself into this job. And it's hard and it's just fun and it's super rewarding. It's really great when you can take a room full of people or a city full of people, a portion of the town, and help them and move this community forward. I have a vision for this city. I think I've made it pretty clear tonight. I want to see a better-looking city. We don't have to be Napa. Why don't we try to look a lot better than what we do? Why don't we work together, the city government, the businesses, the building owners? Why can't we work together instead of pointing the fingers? Let's try new ideas and get this place to look better, to attract more investors. And I think that that will be the key to increased sales tax, which will ultimately help the city pay for the things that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon?
Well, I also want to thank Elizabeth for hosting this and everyone for coming out. I think I would love to see this kind of turn out at our regular council meetings as well. So feel free to come to those. I am really proud to be serving on the city council. When I graduated at Cal State Sacramento, I was at a crossroads. I was working for their parks and rec department and had an opportunity to come back to Lakeport. And I didn't hesitate to jump right into it. Lakeport is a city that I love. I'm really happy that my wife agreed to move with me and now we're raising our kids here. I'm a third-generation Lakeport resident and I promise to work hard on local issues like improving roads and infrastructure, increasing economic development and just improving our quality of life for generations to come. So thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Thank you. Kim?
I also want to thank you genuinely. It's really great to be able to just have a conversation with some folks here in the room and those who will be listening and watching this again. So touching on some of the things that we've already talked about, I just want to note with the housing conversation, we were talking about different types of housing, but another distinction is housing for purchase versus housing for rent. And I think we have to be mindful of, we want to make sure our community, that there's options for both, good options for both. And to that end, the city of Lakeport has gone after community development block grant money and we're working on some strategies. I'm part of a stakeholders group to figure out how we can help make homeownership more viable for folks in our town. And I think the options of, say, townhouses and other types of builds that are maybe more viable for developers, those are great things to explore. So again, just to keep an open mind on what we might be able to do. I think strengthening our economic situation is not just a good idea, it's vital, given some of the realities we've talked about. And I think that one thing we have that other people don't, we have this beautiful lake. We have this beautiful environment. I think we should tap the things that are uniquely ours and figure out how to develop businesses and attractions that brings that to highlight and take tourism, bring tourists here from the Bay Area and other places that will want to come and see and do what is uniquely ours. So that would be part of my desire. I do want to also mention the Risk Reduction Authority. It didn't come up, but it is a joint powers authority that I sit on the board of. And that entity is very busy making available all kinds of services and doing research to reduce risk of, say, wildfire and other disasters. Sixty percent of the landmass in Lake County has burned since two thousand and fifteen. Part of that is they're going after a viable biomass industry planted in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate you being here. It's a busy campaign season. So thank you all very much. Kim Costa, Brandon Disney, Michael Freo, Kenny Parlet, Carl Porter and Christina Price. Thank you all very much. Best of luck to all of you in this campaign season. I hope it's positive for you. And thank you to everyone here at the city. Kelly Buendia, Hillary Britton, people who helped me put all this together. They really kind of, they arranged the seats. They brought the water. Thank you so much for making it and for sitting here and making sure we get out of the building tonight, too. And this will be posted on the website and on our YouTube channel. So people will be able to watch again. So thank you, everyone. Everyone, and thank you for coming. Have a wonderful evening.